Good evening and welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education regular meeting for July 21st, 2025. And I'm going to say Happy New Year. I'll tell you why in a moment. Okay, could we have a roll call? Mrs. Acosta, please.
Mrs. Burton?
Here.
Mrs. Frank?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. McFarland?
Here.
Mrs. Acosta is here. President Bradford?
Here, and we have a quorum. I have Mrs. Acosta busy today. Mrs. Acosta, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Again, Happy New Year. This is our first regular meeting of the year. This is called our organizational meeting. So the board is starting off their year and we're really excited to get going. We've had a few weeks off for our vacation and I think everybody had some trips and all sorts of fun things planned, but now we're getting down to business. So Happy New Year. If you'd like to follow along with us at tonight's meeting and you would like a copy of the agenda, that can be found out on the table to our left. If you're joining us from home, you can go on our LPS website at www.livoniapublicschools.org, click on the School Board tab, go down to Board Meeting Information, and then you'll find our meeting agenda for tonight. All right. Tonight is a regular meeting or a voting meeting. If you've tuned in to watch this meeting, you might notice that there's not a lot of discussion on some of the items that we see before us. That's because we've seen them prior. But since it is in the new year, we are starting out mainly with organizational information. So one other item I'd like to briefly talk about is our community with character trait, which is respect. Our students learn, model, and follow this trait every day at school. Our board also follows this and models this important trait here at the table. We do not always agree with one another, and we have a lot of different opinions, but one thing is certain, we treat each other with respect for our differences and in the way that we convey them to each other. You have our word that this board will treat everyone in the room with respect, and we ask that everybody do the same for us. And with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to, oh, I'm on the wrong thing. I'm coming here. Let's see. We're going to move on to Item Three, Communications, and we're going to start off this wonderful meeting with a district update from our superintendent.
How about that, Mrs. Bradford?
Right off the bat. I don't understand. Look at this.
My goodness. That usually doesn't happen.
Exactly. This is exciting.
So we're going to ask Mr. Carn to go ahead and throw up on the screen a few highlights. You may think it's summertime and there's not much going on, but we know that there certainly is. And I'll extend the introduction there. Okay, here we go. So we're going to just really share some highlights. As you know, we have often shared that we have over 1,900 staff, and while many of them work in our schools throughout the year, we have about 1,000 staff members that are outside of our schools and working in a variety of services to make sure that we are ready to open school and that our schools themselves, as well as our offices and departments, are ready to go. So just a few shots from around the district during the summertime, because we have lots of folks who are here in the summer. So as you can imagine, the bus garage is one of those places. Ross Roberts is our garage supervisor. In fact, we met with him today to talk about the fleet and updating the fleet over this next year or so. So we have all of our buses and our maintenance vehicles coming in for thorough inspections and repair so that we are ready to go. As you can see, tires and brakes are the most common work that's completed on the fleet, but we have 94 buses in our fleet and we have dozens of maintenance vehicles as well. So there is a lot to do. We are thrilled to be bringing on a new mechanic in the near future, and so we will have a full complement of folks in the bus garage, and that is always important, because you know that we always, each year, go through a thorough inspection by the state as well. And getting those green tags on all of our vehicles is very important. So kudos to everyone working out in the bus garage. You see a couple of our dispatchers and routers working hard. This is a hugely busy time for the Transportation Department. Not only are they still providing some service to our students for our summer, some of our summer school work, but as you know, they are moving over to TransFinder. And so this is our new software. It is the first time we have moved away from PolyPlot, I think, for maybe a century. It feels like we've had PolyPlot. So we are truly moving into some great new technology that will be not only helpful to the folks in our Transportation Department who work so hard to get those routes down, but it'll be great for our families, because they will have an app and be able to track where their student's bus is. They'll be able to track if it's running late. And so, as you know, we're always sending out messages and things to do that. Thank you. I appreciate. Yes, right?
That's the biggest, like, head nodding.
Excellent. Yes, right. Way to go. Yes, way to go, Transportation Department. So no, we're really excited about TransFinder coming to help us with not only the routing, but to give that option to parents and to schools, because we also have our secretaries who are constantly answering those calls when it comes to, you know, late arrivals and late dismissals. So all the way around, it is a welcome addition, and the board approved that last year. Our team is busy working through it in both IT and transportation. And of course, the grounds crew. I don't know if there's anyone busier than the grounds crew during the summer. We have Jessie here, who initially was a little surprised to see Mrs. Jenkins finding him out and about and taking pictures, but he acquiesced and let us take a picture of the lawn mowing at Riley. As you know, we have over 700 acres that we take care of in the district, as well as 3 million square feet of school buildings and office space. So our crews are busy, and each of our work crews are doing a phenomenal job. And it is warm out there. Every time we go through for our bond walkthroughs, boy, our folks are working their tails off, both in and out of the school, so we want to recognize them. And of course, some of our wonderful ladies here. Mrs. Junta, did you know you were going to be featured?
No.
No, you were shocked. Shock, she says. And Mrs. New in Human Resources. And we have Mrs. Sisnowski from Rosedale over for the summer. She's helping us do some registration. So we are definitely busy. That lobby is constantly busy with families that are registering, as well as new staff that we are bringing onboard. It's a pretty fun time in the summer in Central Office, because there are lots of that great buzz happening as we get ready for the new year. Speaking of busy things, we have our kids club over at Riley. For many years, Buchanan hosted Summer SAC. For the past couple of years, it's been over at Riley, and they are having a blast. We have just our awesome SAC folks who are there. And Jenny Kessler has been our summer leader for many years in SAC. So you'll just enjoy some pictures of our kiddos doing some activities throughout the school. Some great smiling faces. And we also have Learning in Eltown. You will get the full summary from Mrs. O'Brien come September, but we just wanted to share some highlights. We shared a few last month and some, just some great activities happening. These are our camps that are taking place throughout June and July. And we also have our ESY, our Extended School Year, taking place right now over at Hays, and our summer school for high school at Franklin and Stevenson. So here we have our kiddos, again, participating in our different camps through Learning in Eltown. And we have been really fortunate these past few years to have grant funding to be able to provide this to our littlest learners. And thanks to all the staff that are also working during those summer weeks. Music Theater Camp had a great performance this past weekend at Franklin. So the Franklin Players, as you know, put on terrific performances throughout the year. They hosted a theater camp, and then they also performed a Broadway Review on Friday night. Our kids love those. So whether it's Kappa Camp, or the Franklin Players, or, gosh, football camp, basketball camp, volleyball camp, there's so much happening throughout the schools. I was at one of our high schools the other evening, taking a look at our new field over there, and there was something going on everywhere around, tennis courts, baseball, softball, in the gym. So our high schools are busy places in the summer, and we appreciate all of our students who participate and have some of our younger ones for these special kind of events, and all of our parent volunteers and staff putting those on. Congratulations, Mr. McFarland. A great golf outing. Mrs. Jarvis, our LPS Education Foundation President. Really, what a great event, and we're reblessed with that weather on Saturday. So all the way around, it was a sold-out event. How many golfers did we have?
136.
136, yeah. Two foursomes on all 18.
Wow. It was fantastic. You see on the right there, our high school students from the golf team. They ran the fundraiser. They were willing to take a tee shot at the eighth hole for a donation. I don't know who would pass that up, because they're good. And so we had some great teams out there, a number of our board members, cabinet members, and community members. So ton of business partners, and thanks to Plant Moran, Real Point for year number three being our presenting sponsor. So we've got a few foursomes there, and Mrs. Bradford, your team was on fire.
Oh, we're rehabber.
Yeah. It was great to have the Ulasic family was there, and Hannah and her brothers are pictured there in the middle. Unfortunately, they lost their dad this past year, very, very sadly. And New Hope Center provides grief and counseling support for families, and they also worked with Emerson families and Emerson students this past year. So they were doing a fundraiser for that program and raised a lot of funds for a wonderful organization. Few more picks. It was a full house at Coach's Corner. I spy Mrs. Keats there with a former student in the middle. It was really a great day. So thank you to everyone who came out and golfed or served as a sponsor. We appreciate the support. And that support goes back to our students and staff in the form of grants for our classrooms and for our schools. So it's a win-win event all the way around. And just a reminder, you are our best advertisers. We are hiring in a number of positions, some of our skilled trades like HVAC and electrician. We're also going to be doing a bus roundup rodeo event to bring in some new bus drivers, and we are currently also hiring some student services personnel, including paraprofessionals. So we'd love to have you join our awesome team. All the information is on our website. And the Livonia Police Department is also looking to hire crossing guards. The LPD hires crossing guards for our schools in Livonia, and the Westland PD hires for our schools in Westland that use crossing guards. And mark your calendars for a couple things coming up. Bounce Back to School, it is right around the corner on the 14th. That happens to be our new staff orientation day. So after a great day with all of our new staff members, we will be heading over to Riley for Bounce Back to School. So we usually welcome about 1,000 of our students and families for that event, so please make sure you pass the word. And we are excited to welcome you for that annual event. And thanks so much, President Bradford. Not as long as usual, but we wanted to make sure that we acknowledged all of our staff who are working hard in the summer to get school ready to go for the '25-'26 school year.
That's why we say Happy New Year.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Oakwest.
You're so welcome.
We're going to go on to Item 3B, Audience Communications. I'm happy to announce that we do not have any blue slips this evening, which makes me very happy. So thank you. All right. Moving, it is a little thing. Moving on to Item Four. Oh, this is a great topic, Personnel Matters. We've got lots of great things happening in this category this evening. So we will start with Item 4A, the Approval of Collective Bargaining Agreement with Livonia Secretarial Association. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford?
Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education enter into a three-year contract the Livonia Secretarial Association, whose agreement has been ratified by LSA members. Said contract shall continue until June 30th, 2028.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Johnson, for the Approval of Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Livonia Secretarial Association. And this evening, we're going to hear from Mr. Abate, I believe.
Yeah, that's me, and yes, and thank you.
Sorry, I can't see you back there. I know you're there.
Yep, yep, yep. We're back at it, right?
Yes.
All right. Yes, we're very excited for this, as we always are with our collective bargaining agreements. Every time we negotiate with one of our work groups, it's an opportunity to take care of our people, provide stability both for them and the district for the years of that contract, in this case, three years. And, you know, we had great talks with our secretarial union. I don't think I need to remind folks that our secretaries are the engines of our schools. Principal can be out, AP can be out, people, maybe they don't always notice that secretary is out. Everyone knows, right? And so this is a very important work group, a super hard-working work group, and we were pleased to be at the table with them. Joining us at the table for the LSA were Mrs. Shelley Robinett, Mrs. Marcella Stewart, and Mr. Eric Longuski from the MEA. We had a lot of great meetings. Sometimes these, you know, these negotiations, they last a little longer than we might hope. This one, we got in just, we couldn't get it in quite under the wire to get the last meeting of the last month, but here we are. We did arrive at an agreement that, as I said, we feel gets our secretaries to a good place financially and fits within the boundaries of what we can do as a district responsibly. And we're just really glad to have that in place for our secretaries.
Thank you.
Oh, and my apologies. We also had Laura Flavin at the table with us. I wouldn't want to miss that.
She was out for a time, and then she, yeah, joined us again.
We had, yeah. We had a little bit of movement in the middle of there, but thank you very much for that catch. I wouldn't have wanted to miss that. And yeah, so with that, we would love to get this signed.
Well, thank you, Mr. Abate. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Burton?
Just one. It's often been said, and I'm one who said it, that principal sets a tone for a building, but secretaries are in a unique role to do that also. Speaking from a longtime parent and as a longtime parent in the district, having secretaries who, all of our secretaries do their jobs, there are so many who really go that extra mile to make parents feel welcome. If parents are in the office frequently, it's because they're concerned about something, they're nervous about something, something has gone wrong somewhere along the day in the life of their child. So having a secretary who makes parents feel warm and welcome and truly a team player is crucial. And so many of our staff over the years have done that, I know, for myself and our family, but I would just like to say thank you for that. That kind of other duties is assigned type role that secretaries often fulfill.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. That is so true. I think everybody at this table has dealt with a secretary once or twice in their lives, and they do a fantastic job. So we're so grateful to all our secretaries. So thank you. So at this time, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Johnson, for the Approval of Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Livonia Secretarial Association. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Yes. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Congratulations. We're going to have, we're going to have our representatives come on up, please, right? They come on up, the officers come up, please, and Mr. Longuski. I love the enthusiasm. Come on up and sign that agreement. Come on down. Come on down. Come on down.
All the way down.
Yes, yes, yes. Yay, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. Eric, thanks. We appreciate it. Whoopsie. Okay. Okay. Hope I got to sign something. One moment. Mrs. Acosta? That'll make it official. All right, I'll pass it back down. Thank you. Congratulations again. Okay, moving right along, we have some great recommendations coming up here, so stay tuned. We have Item 4B, a Recommendation for Student Services Coordinator. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford?
Mr. McFarland?
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint William Perrinello as Student Services Coordinator.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. McFarland, supported by Mrs. Acosta, for the Recommendation for a Student Service Coordinator. And this evening, we're going to hear from Mr. Abate.
Yes, thank you very much. These are the best moments of our role in HR, the opportunity to introduce people to new roles in the district, or sometimes new people to the district. In this case, we had a retirement in student services that necessitated filling a vacancy. And we had some great interviews and some really, really quality candidates, but the person who rose to the top on this occasion was Mr. Bill Perrinello. And I'll give you a little bit of his background. Bill began his career in Garden City, serving as a paraprofessional and teaching assistant and a member of the Behavior Support Staff at Berger, before he earned his school psychology credentials, and he accepted his first school psychologist position in Monroe County ISD. He joined us in 2020 when he was hired as a school psychologist. He supported multiple elementary schools, and in 2024, most recently, became a program specialist, supporting LPS staff teams and students district-wide. He has been involved in quite a range of things here in the district, everything from multi-tiered systems of supports to positive behavior intervention support, to FBA development. He has been on the FBA Work Group, the Elementary Collaboration Team, PBAAS Coaches Team, and most recently, was a member of the Aspiring Administrators Cohort. He provided a lot of thoughtful replies and contributions to that group. We certainly took notice, and that's a good thing. He brought, he typically does bring a calm professionalism to his work, but it certainly showed up in his interviews. His colleagues speak of him as an empathetic person. He has, his colleagues speak of him as an empathetic person, warm, approachable. That also came through, both through aspiring administrators and through our, our interviews. Known for acute problem-solving skills, composure in difficult situations. We know that sometimes there are meetings that don't go the way we would hope, and he is known for navigating those with particular skill. That was noted again and again in his, his references by colleagues. And we just think he's going to be a nice complimentary fit. We have a highly skilled and diverse range of experience on our student services team. We think he's going to slot right in with that great group, and, and off they will go and be running. And I'll give you a little bit of his academic background. Bill holds a Bachelor of Arts in Psychology, a Master of Arts in School and Community Psychology, and an Ed Specialist in School and Community Psychology, all from Wayne State University. And he's in the midst of completing an educational leadership with a special, excuse me, a Master in Educational Leadership with a Specialization in Special Education Administration from Grand Valley University. Bill, we feel is the right person for the role at the right time, and we'd love to recommend him to you tonight for approval.
Wow, thank you, Mr. Abate.
That was a little fast. I need to slow it down. I always tell me to slow it down.
That was quite, that was exciting, and what a wonderful resume. Good Lord, that's excellent. All right, does anybody have any questions or comments? No, because we're going to get right to it. So, we have a motion by Mr. McFarland, supported by Mrs. Acosta, for the Recommendation for the Student Services Coordinator. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Congratulations. Here comes Bill.
Thank you so much.
Oh, tap your mic.
Tap the red dot until it turns green.
I just want to thank you all so much. I'm so excited to be here. I've worked in a few different districts, as you know. The support that Livonia gives to students with special needs, to all of their students, is absolutely amazing. The amount of support that you give to student services, mental health issues, school psychology, social work, all of those ancillary services is beyond belief. I started here during COVID, and that was really what impressed me, because coming from a different district and seeing how much effort and resources that you guys provided to your students and being really student-focused was an absolute seller for me. So, I honestly say that I am just, I'll take this opportunity. I'm so thankful for it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Before we go on to the next item, I'm going to let you know we are going to take a break, if you can believe that, after item four F, Retirement. So the break is coming for all the little ones out there. All right, moving on to item four C, the Recommendation for Emerson Principal. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Brian Jensen as principal at Emerson Middle School.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by many members, but Mrs. Frank, for the Recommendation for the Emerson Principal. And this evening, we're going to hear again from Mr. Abate.
Yes, thank you very much. I get to talk a little bit about the middle schools. It makes, it swells my heart. So, again, we, we are always excited when we feel like we have, you know, we've identified the right person at the right time for a particular job, a really important job, in this case. We just don't have any question about that in, in Brian Jensen. So let me give you a little bit of his background, and I'll tell you a little bit about my thoughts on, on, on this candidacy. So Brian began his career in, in 2010, serving as a fifth-grade teacher at Gladstone Area Public Schools, moved on to teach middle school math and science at the Lansing Charter Academy for several years, and then caught on as the middle school dean at Fortis Academy. He joined us as the Assistant Principal at Frost in 2021. He also has been working as adjunct faculty for Concordia University since 2020, training aspiring administrators in educational leadership and courses. Leadership courses, excuse me. So, let me, let me just say this, because this is, I feel really important. I know that, you know, there's been, there's been a lot of changes at Emerson. They've experienced some, some turnover there, and that, that can be really hard. And we knew that going into this process, knowing that we weren't looking for somebody that wanted to hold down the role, the role in the short term, somebody that could, you know, take care of things in the interim. We wanted somebody who fit the bill of investment, right? Somebody who was wanting to go there and, and be all about that community and to, and to have the, the time and the commitment and the dedication to carry them forward in a longer term into the brand-new chapter for that, that community. And that is Brian Jensen all over. And I'm going to, I'm going to let him talk about that, because I know he's going to speak about, you know, his roots in the community and so on. But in his time at Frost, you know, he, he came over, he was an instructional dean, so he spent a lot of time at Fortis, working with teachers, teaching teachers how to teach, which is a good thing, right? And he came over to Frost, and he had a lot of those sort of dean-student-ish responsibilities, working with behavior and so on. It was a little bit of a shift in that first year. When he got his feet under him and he was able to then turn his attention to the academics in the building, he, he flew, right? And his contributions to the intervention module there that they have running are significant. He's, he's, he's put a lot in, and I think the, you know, the A ratings that they've received from him to you over the last couple of years are a testament to that. I think his partnership with, with Mrs. Wheeler as a principal has been very fruitful. And we've just watched Brian grow there for the, over the last four years, to the point where here he, here he was, sitting down to, to interview to be a principal in a, in a school, a school that really needs strong leadership. And boy, did he, did he speak to us about commitment and about investment. And, you know, I'm going to, like I said, I'll let him talk about that. But he is, he's the person to be there now. We have no doubt, and we're excited for that. I'll tell you about his educational background. He's a Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education from Saginaw Valley State University, a Master of Arts in Teaching and Curriculum from Michigan State University, and an Ed Specialist in K-12 Administration from Wayne State University. Brian, we can't wait for you to get there. We know you're going to do an amazing job. And we're very pleased to recommend him to the board tonight for a vote.
Thank you so much. Okay, thank you. Is there any questions or comments? Oh, we're going to get right at this one, too. All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the Recommendation for the Emerson Principal. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Oh, yes, and the motion carries. Congratulations. Brian has a fan club. Love it.
We're green. All right.
All right, so thank you Superintendent Oquist and members of the board for just giving me this opportunity to perform in a community in which I reside. I'm honored and filled with enthusiasm to be the next principal at Emerson Middle School. I've been fortunate to meet several members of the team over the last few years, and even more so in the last few weeks. I look forward to meeting the rest of the staff, and especially the students, this fall. The emails, the texts, the calls I've received in the past few weeks mean so much to me that I just feel like I'm very embraced as the newest member of the Emerson team. That, that means so much to me, that I'm really extending my family in a new way. A huge thank you to my wife and for her unwavering support, her advice, always pushing me to be my best. I couldn't do it without you. She's sitting behind me with our two boys. We've lived in Livonia for nearly a decade and started our family here. Fortunately, four years ago, a handful of administrative positions opened up in the district. One of them was this very job. However, at that time, I landed a position as the Assistant Principal at Frost. My four years at Frost will be ingrained in me forever. I was able to learn from a remarkable principal and Ms. Wheeler, and from an amazing staff. Some of the members are even here tonight. I'm grateful for those experiences at Frost, and thank you for preparing me for being in this position today. We live in the Franklin Triad with our two boys, who are being very good behind me. They're snacking. They will also be future patriots, and I am proud to step into the role where I can impact the lives of the students and families in my neighborhood. Living in the triad for so many years, playing at the parks with my boys, going for walks, attending Franklin events, has revealed a deep sense of pride, commitment to family, and a feeling of belonging within the community. My goal is to create those same feelings at Emerson, to create a sense of personal pride and pride for your school, to create a feeling that everyone belongs, for students, staff, and parents to have a purpose within our school community, that we will engage our students as thinkers and problem solvers and develop good, well-rounded human beings. The core of my philosophy begins with forming strong interpersonal relationships built on mutual respect and positive interactions. Adolescence brings many challenges for our scholars as they transition to adulthood. And as a parent, you entrust us all to make the best decisions for your children while they're in our care. I strongly believe that we must model the behaviors we expect from our children through consistent approaches. We will guide them in developing the life skills needed for high school and beyond. I have a passion for creating an environment where all children can thrive. Our students are at a pivotal age where they're trying to discover who they are. Of course, that journey is going to have its challenges, but I believe with the support of our staff and our parent partnership, we can create an atmosphere where they will discover the best versions of themselves as people and as learners. My journey through the field of education has been enriched with through relationships. I've built knowledge that I've, that I've learned from others, and I'm eager to meet our students and staff and be getting this positive learning experience for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian, and welcome. We're going to move on to item four D, the Recommendation for Cooper Assistant Principal. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Rachel Dzkowski as Assistant Principal at Cooper Upper Elementary School.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the Recommendation for Cooper Assistant Principal. And we are going to hear once again, oh, we're going to hear from Mrs. Keats.
Yes, yes, I get the thunder now.
All right.
All right. So, like Mr. Abate said, this is one of the most joyous things we can do in HR is to bring new people into new roles, and Rachel is no exception to this. So we are thrilled to bring forth Rachel Dzkowski this evening as the next AP at Cooper Elementary. She currently is a COLT, so she won't be changing schools, but she'll be changing roles there. She has served as the ESAP, which is Elementary Student Assistance Provider, for the past two years at, at Cooper, where she has worked hand-in-hand with the support team, as well as the administrative team, in working in PBIS, in student relationships, in SEL work, just hitting the ground running and expecting so much from those students at Cooper, who were once coyotes and now Colts. We know these traits and so much more will carry on as she takes a new office just down the hall and partners with Mr. Witherspoon at the helm there. She has such a strong sense that students are at the center of everything we do in schools, and it is, it is very apparent as we interviewed her, and she shared her experiences as a teacher at Cleveland and in her support role at Cooper. Her skill set is just so well-suited. She builds trust with the kids, she builds trust with families, and she has those difficult conversations when they need to be had. We know there's going to be a dynamic partnership between Mr. Witherspoon and Rachel as she takes this role. It, it was really remarkable how prepared and professional she was in the entire interview process. I think you may have found a new role as the Presentation Queen in all, from this point going forward. Just remarkably prepared, so well-versed in what's going on at Cooper and what the needs are. And we know you're just going to hit the ground running. So, her professional preparation includes a BA in Science and Math from Grand Valley, a Master of Arts in K-12 Educational Administration from Michigan State. So I bring to you tonight Rachel Dzkowski.
We still have to vote. All right, we're going to, any, any questions or comments from the board? Except that we're going to vote, because we're going to do it right away, just like all the other ones, because it's so exciting. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the Recommendation for the Cooper Assistant Principal. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yep, yes, and you got it. Congratulations.
Thank you. I am so grateful to be here today, and I am fortunate to have been surrounded by people that have inspired me and believed in me, all the way from kindergarten up until my 14th year with LPS. So I wanted to start by thanking Superintendent Oquist for her recommendation and her belief in me to help lead Cooper Upper Elementary. Thank you to the board for your unwavering commitment to our district and for the opportunity to stand before you today. I want to thank the cabinet team and our district leadership for the privilege of working with and learning from all of you, including my new partner in crime, Mr. Witherspoon. I want to thank my family and my friends who have shown me so much love and support as I continue to pursue my dreams. And then to my Cooper family and the Cooper community. I'm excited for the work that lies ahead, and I am honored to be at home with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, moving on to item four E, Teachers for Approval. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mrs. Burton?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and offer employment for the 2025-26 school year to the teachers listed on the attached document. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank, for teachers for approval, and this evening, we're going to hear from Mr. Abate.
Yes, thank you. So, as you can see, we've been busy. We have many roles to, to fill, and we are very happy with the group of candidates that we have brought in for these, for these positions. Our administrator's been working so hard in both the secondary and the elementary. Particular shout-out to our elementary team led by Jen Wilson, who has, I mean, wow, the, the number, how many individuals did they do? Jen, you don't have to tell me yet. They're going to put you on the spot. Yeah, yeah, they're going to put you on the spot. But the point is, an incredible effort to go out and find the brightest and best here for the district, and we feel that they, they've certainly done so. And so, we have a group of teachers we're pleased to present to you. They will all most certainly perform at high level and represent LPS in a manner that's consistent with our shared vision and collective commitments. We've also arranged for these positions to be included in the 25-26 budget. And with your approval, we're very pleased to have them working with our students.
Thank you, Mr. Abate. Any questions or comments from the board?
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome. It's a big list and a lot of good people on that list, so we look forward to them having a successful career in LPS. We wish them all the best here. We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank, for teachers for approval. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Moving on to item four F, Retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mrs. Acosta?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the, the attached resolutions of appreciation for services rendered by Kathleen Hartley, Cynthia Herbeck, Walter Klotz, Myra Pearson. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for retirement, and we are going to hear from Mrs. Keats.
Yes, some great names on that list that we are going to miss tremendously. So tonight, we honor and congratulate four members of our LPS family who are retiring from their positions with Livonia Public Schools. As these staff members leave the district, they take with them a combined total of, wait for it, 109 years of experience. It's incredible.
Four people.
Four people. On behalf of the administration, I would like to thank these wonderful staff members for the dedicated years of service they provided the students of Livonia Public Schools, and we ask that the board to please adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for our retirees.
Thank you, Mrs. Keats. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Burton?
This is just one that we always have such mixed emotions voting on. We certainly wish our retirees a wonderful next chapter, and at the same time, these are holes that, that cannot just be filled by somebody else. It's, each one has made such a lasting impression on, on our kiddos and on the staff members with whom they work. Cindy Herbeck has been a personal friend of mine for many, many years, and I would just like to give a special hug to Cindy and a congratulations to all of our folks who are retiring.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for retirements. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. And guess what? We get to take a little break. We're going to take a short break to congratulate- We're going to take a short break to congratulate all our honorees. We'll be back in a moment. Welcome back to the regular meeting of July 21st, 2025. We are ready to move on to item five, the annual organization matters, item 5A, the adoption of the 2025-2026 bylaws to establish meeting dates and other procedures. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached bylaws to establish the 2025-2026 board meeting dates, procedures for the calling and posting of board meetings, and authorization to sign contracts and legal documents for the board.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. McFarland, I believe. It was a quiet one. All right, for the adoption of the 2025-26 bylaws to establish meeting dates and other procedures, and we're going to hear from Mrs. Oakquist.
Thank you so much, President Bradford. And that was a very exciting part to our meeting, a lot of great personnel items. So, thank you to our board for that and for being able to move those items up on the agenda so families could participate. Sure. We do have our, our meeting set for the 25-26 school year. So, according to our bylaws, we have one meeting a month for each, one regular meeting a month for the school year. We will also regularly hold study sessions and committee meetings, and the full schedule can be found on our website. It is also posted at the Board of Education office. This motion also includes the board and the secretary being authorized to sign all contracts and legal documents on behalf of the Board of Education following the approval of this resolution. So, we would recommend the adoption of these regular meeting dates, with each meeting beginning at 6:30 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakquist. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. McFarland, for the adoption of the 2025-2026 bylaws to establish meeting dates and other procedures. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford.
Yes, and the motion carries. Moving on to item 5B, the designation of the 2025-2026 bank depositories. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mr. McFarland?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District designate JP Morgan Chase Bank and Michigan Liquid Asset Fund Plus as depositories for the, for the school district during the 2025-2026 school year.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. McFarland, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the designation of the 2025-2026 bank depositories, and we are going to hear from Mrs. Allison Smith. Hello, Mrs. Smith?
Thank you, President Bradford. Thank you. This represents no change from this past year for this coming school year. We're planning to continue to use JP Morgan Chase for cutting checks and ACH payments to vendors, and then we use MyLaff for depositing balances so we can maximize interest earnings on our funds, so.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? No, these are things that we do annually, anyway. So, we have a motion by Mr. McFarland, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the designation of the 2025-2026 bank depositories. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Moving on to item 5C, the appointment of Investment Officer. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District appoint the Treasurer, Ms. Allison Smith, as the Investment Officer in conjunction with the district's investment policy for the 2025-2026 school year.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Johnson, for the appointment of the Investment Officer. Mrs. Oakquist is going to speak on this.
Thank you so much, President Bradford. As the Investment Officer, the superintendent or designee, who in this case is Ms. Smith, our very capable CFO, will oversee the day-to-day management of the district's investments. Ms. Smith has served in this role for several years, and we would recommend her to continue as the district's Investment Officer.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Burton?
Just like to thank Mrs. Smith for doing a very difficult job. Many folks can transition from one role with training into another role, and the same is not true for Financial Director of the school, of any school district. And finding capable people to handle this role and to do it well is exceedingly difficult. Please know that you are very, very appreciated, as is all of our cabinet, but you have, you just have a unique role and, and you- But you have, you just have a unique role and unique qualifications, and your work does not go taken for granted for a moment.
Yep, well said. Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Any other questions or comments?
That she said.
Exactly. Thank you, Colleen. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Johnson, for the appointment of investment officer. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Or, yes, the motion carries. Oops. All right. Moving on to item five D. The appointment of staff member to be in charge of elections. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mr. Johnson.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District acknowledge the appointment of William Green as the staff member in charge of school elections for the 2025-2026 school year. This appointment is made by the board secretary with formal acknowledgement by the Board of Education.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the appointment of staff member to be in charge of elections. We're going to hear again from Mrs. Oakquist.
Thank you, President Bradford. In Livonia Public Schools, we have traditionally requested that the board secretary appoint the cabinet member who oversees operations to take on this responsibility. As you know, Mr. Green is currently transitioning to the role of Assistant Superintendent of Operations, so he is recommended as the appointee.
Congratulations, Mr. Green. All right. Does anybody have any questions or comments other than we're excited for Mr. Green to be in this role? And thank you to Mr. Francis, who previously did the role.
Yes.
Just lost the election by that.
All right. Seeing no other comments, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the appointment of staff member to be in charge of elections. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Moving on to item five E. The appointment of staff member responsible for posting board meeting notices. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mrs. Burton.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District acknowledge the appointment of the superintendent as the administrator in charge of posting meeting notices. This appointment is made by the board secretary with formal acknowledgement by the Board of Education. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the appointment of staff member responsible for posting board meeting notices. And again, Mrs. Oakquist.
Thank you, President Bradford. As you know, our bylaws designate the secretary of the board as the individual who would be responsible for causing notice to be given of our public meetings. Our attorneys have advised that the board secretary delegate this to the administration. And I then will delegate this, further delegate this responsibility to our administrative assistant, Mrs. Teresa Junta, for, to the board and the superintendent as responsible for posting meeting notices.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakquist. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none? Yes, thank you for doing that. We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the appointment, appointment of staff member responsible for posting board meeting notices. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to item six, the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Oh, Mrs. Acosta.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. Six A, minutes of the regular meeting of June 23rd, 2025. Six B, minutes of the public hearing of June 23rd, 2025.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mr. Johnson, for the consent agenda. These are routine items that have been reviewed by our board committee at our board committee meetings. And is there any member of the board who wishes to remove any item? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mr. Johnson, for the consent agenda. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Acosta says yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
President Bradford?
Yes, the motion carries. Moving on to item eight, business matters. Item eight A, the establishment of tuition rate for the 2025-26 school year. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mrs. Frank.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools establish the tuition rate for the 2025-26 school year at $15,045 for non-resident students per board policy JBCB non-resident students.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the establishment of tuition rate for the 2025-26 school year. This evening, we're going to hear from Mrs. Smith.
Thank you very much. As you know, board policy JBCB allows for, under certain circumstances, non-resident students to attend Livonia Public Schools. As a general rule, we don't allow non-residents to attend. But again, in special circumstances, the superintendent can approve that. So according to this board policy, we'll set a tuition rate. That's dictated by law, how we go about calculating it. And that's what I bring for you tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Do we have any questions or comments about this, regarding this item? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the establishment of tuition rate for the 2025-2026 school year. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Moving on to item eight B, the approval to purchase copy paper. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mr. McFarland?
Moved that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of copy paper from Contract Paper Group, Cuyuga Falls, Ohio, in an amount not to exceed $146,520.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. McFarland, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the approval to purchase copy paper. And this is always a great item. We're going to hear from Mr. Francis tonight.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. So Contract Paper Group is the company that we've been using the last few years. They do have that Wayne County RISA contract via the countywide bid process. I do want to point out that the amount we have it not to exceed, there's a couple of things going on here. One, this is a higher amount than we've, than we spent last year. For specifically, the reason is that we have two things going on. One, for several years, we've had a less costly paper we've been using. It's been a recycled, a special recycled paper. We've had some, more than some, concerns with it at the building level, it jamming, it giving us issues, the folks from the copy company coming by, having to fix some things with the rollers, et cetera. So we made the decision after many, many, many conversations about this, because this has been an ongoing item for a couple of years. And we said we were going to move away from that paper and get some more traditional paper. So that costs a little more. Also, over the last few years, we've had some schools stop ordering their paper supplies from the LPS warehouse and have kind of gone on their own and getting supplies from other companies using their building funds because they did not like the performance of previous papers. So after a committee that was put together this spring, we had those conversations and made the decision to say, let's just go ahead and get the type of paper that folks at the buildings are saying, and the copy machine company saying, this will work better. So we do have a little bit higher price than if we went back and looked at what we spent before. Also, it's hard to predict what we're going to have. So we sort of have this not to exceed number to say, we don't want to have to come back in May and ask the board to approve a few more dollars to get folks through the end of the school year.
Thank you, Mr. Francis, for that explanation. Because, I mean, we all know if you work in an industry that uses copy paper, and if the, if they're jamming up the machines, it's holding up every, it holds up a lot of things during the day. And this will hopefully alleviate it, even though it might be costing a little bit more. It's probably better in the long run on the machines and everything for wear and tear. So thanks for that great explanation. I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Bradford. Mr. Francis, I'm assuming that we're going to monitor how well this paper works over the next year to see if they eliminate some of those problems that they were having?
Yes, for sure. And believe me, the folks at the buildings who use them will let us know as well if it does start to give some, some of the same issues.
Okay, thanks.
For sure. I'm sure they'll let us know.
Do you want to just explain that sometimes it's the quality of the paper, but it's also storage of it?
Yes.
That we're fairing some of that?
Right, that's what we're trying to, yes. That is.
That still has to.
Yeah. Didn't, didn't want to go down too much in the rabbit hole, but Mrs. Oakquist is 100% correct. There's been a debate whether it's the actual paper or how the paper is being stored. We have, yes, we have air conditioning in most spaces in buildings. Our warehouse isn't, isn't air conditioned. The building supervisor and custodial rooms and spaces, closets, the receiving area is not air conditioned. So if you take cases and cases or have a pallet full of paper sitting in a space from April, May, June, July, August, and you start using it in September, October, November, it may, May is what might be the humidity. So there's, again, there's been back and forth. There's, there's a camp that says absolutely not, and there's a camp that says, you know, it's, it's definitely the paper, you know, and the other camp saying like, it could be something else. So we're going to, we're going to do our little science experiment here and see if we can get it figured out.
Well, I think that's a great idea. That, I hope you come to a good resolution on it.
I think we will, but it, because the other one, if it is the latter and not this, we just need to store them in different ways.
Exactly. Sounds good, sounds good to me. And I'm sure the rest of the board. Does anybody have any other questions or comments?
Just Mr. Johnson's?
Okay, great. We have a motion by Mr. McFarland, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the approval to purchase copy paper. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Moving on to item eight C. The approval of Fuel Master system purchase. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the funding of updates and upgrades to the district's Fuel Master monitoring system from Oscar W. Larson, Clarkston, Michigan, in a total approved amount of $41,282, which includes 5% contingency.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Johnson, for the approval of the Fuel Master system purchase. And we're going to hear from Mr. Francis again.
Thank you. So the Fuel Master system is a computerized system that, that monitors when fuel is being put into one of our, whether it be a pickup or a bus, whatever the case may be, into our vehicles in the LPS fleet. We've had this system for, for some time. Currently, we are able to have a, let's say it's a bus driver or a maintenance employee, use their badge to check in, if you will, on the system, to log into the system. And the software will count how many gallons of, whether it be diesel or gasoline. And so we know that at this time, and this person put X number of gallons into one of our vehicles. So it's a good way to track what that particular person is using or that particular vehicle is using. But also overall, our garage supervisor uses that monitoring system to know when it's time to get more, that we need to come get a refill into our tanks. We have underground tanks for diesel and gasoline. A couple of things that we have is, one big piece is we need an add-on. As the board knows, and I think many folks know, we have propane buses. At this point, the propane buses, we have gasoline buses, diesel buses, and propane buses. At this point, we have more propane buses than we have, I'm not saying of gasoline and diesel together, but from each of those three silos, we have more propane than we do a different type of fuel ran bus. We don't have a way to do it with the Fuel Master right now. They are currently doing it the old-school way, paper and pencil, and they mark it down. So that's not efficient. It's, it's, it's something that we've been talking about and working on for quite some time. We knew we had to get propane onto this system. So that's the, the upgrade, is adding propane. The update is the fact that the diesel and the gasoline software is getting along in the tooth also. So we're just going to update all of the software so that all three versions, gasoline, diesel, and propane, will be working on the Fuel Master. And LPS employee who is authorized to use the gas pumps or the propane pumps, their card, their badge will be able to log them in and out of that. So it's a system, if you think about it, similar to the doors that we have, where you can come in and you could just put your badge up against it and it unlocks it for you, but that's also recorded. And we know when you came into that building. So it's similar, just to try to give you some type of similar item. So this is a piece that, again, is very important to our transportation department and our operations and maintenance departments because we have that very large fleet of buses as well as pickups and other types of vehicles.
Great, thank you so much.
This is all going to be paid for out of the capital funds project.
Okay, perfect. Any questions or comments? That was a really good explanation. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments? I think that'll be super pencil papers, probably getting difficult.
And all else fails, though, it still works.
That's true. Good point, good point. All right. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Johnson, for the approval of Fuel Master system purchase. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Moving on to item nine, instructional matters. Nine A is eye-ready diagnostic purchase. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mr. Johnson?
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation to purchase math and reading eye-ready diagnostic licenses for kindergarten through eighth grade students from curriculum associates in North North Billerica, Massachusetts, for a total cost of $107,353.60. The total reflects a discount of $26,838.40 in reduced pricing per license.
Support.
President Bradford?
Yes.
I know this is only pennies, but I believe that the, the amount was said to be 60 cents. Is it fixed? Oh, it is. Oh, it's right, okay.
It's right. He said the right amount.
Okay.
They confuse me so much.
I'm right with her.
We slid it under his nose mid-motion.
Yes, it's all set.
Was there a second?
Oh, wait, we need a second. Oh, Crystal did, thank you. Okay, glad we got that going. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the eye-ready diagnostic purchase. And this evening, we're going to hear from Mrs. Keats.
Yes, thank you. You have heard from Mrs. O'Brien on this topic for the last several years. Since 2016, our district has used the eye-ready diagnostic in kindergarten through eighth grade to assess reading and mathematics to determine proficiency and what intervention needs our students require. So this is a state-required benchmark assessment. And as you mentioned, the cost is a total of $107,353.60. We are saving $1.60 per student, so that is some good savings. And this will come from the Wayne County Enhancement Village and the Michigan Benchmark Assessment Grant.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Keats. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Frank?
I'm sorry if I missed, is this just one year? This is a one-year license or a multi-year license?
This is one-year license.
Thank you. Mrs. Burton? Mrs. Burton?
You may or may not know the answer to this, Mrs. Keats. You said this is coming from a combination of a grant and, I'm sorry, and the Wayne County Enhancement Village?
Yes. So, it is all from the academic services budget, and it's two pieces to that within the academic services budget. It is the Wayne County Enhancement Village and the Michigan Benchmark Assessment Grant. So, yes, you are correct.
It's not covered by the grant. We cover. Out of general.
Do, do you know how much of this is covered by that grant?
Uh...
Just, just in terms of unfunded mandate type of a concept is where my brain is going with this. If it's required by the state of Michigan, and yet it's costing this amount of money, I would just like to know how much of it. And, and you may not know, because I know you're stepping in for Mrs. O'Brien at this point, and if you don't, don't worry about it. We, I'm sure she can get the answer to us later on.
I do not...
We have Mrs. Smith.
Team effort.
We have from the grant $126,337. I don't recall what the motion said now that I haven't read it. I don't, uh...
Did you say it again?
Sure. The grant, we've received funds in the amount of $126,337.
Okay, so we use that grant beyond this?
Okay, we can use this for this entire purchase and then to other items that it would cover. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the eye-ready diagnostic purchase. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Moving on to item 10, hearing from Board members. Typically, hearing from Board, we have a time set aside towards the end of the meeting for any Board member who wishes to speak tonight. It's item 10A, hearing from Board members. Is there anybody that wishes to say something this evening? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Bradford.
You're welcome.
I just want to say that we've been off for about a month, and it's good to be back around the table with all of you, and I look forward to all the good work this coming year.
Thank you. That's lovely. I agree. I concur. I think we all concur. It was nice to have a couple of weeks off, but, you know, our Mondays are calling us, so we're going to be coming back for our Mondays. I think we're getting a few more weeks off, but then we'll be back, but we're happy to be here tonight. Any other questions or comments? Oh, Mrs. Frank, I think wishes to speak.
Maybe.
Maybe? Okay.
I just wanted to say, I'm looking forward to the year as well, Mr. Johnson, and we've had several changes to our cabinet team and just changes in position, not changes with personnel, but changes in positions. And so, we're so excited for those opportunities and just to see how we continue to improve where we are as a district, and so I'm so excited for each of you and for all of us as we continue to learn and grow together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Mr. Johnson again. I don't know if there's only a one-time rule, but we're going to let it slide tonight. Mr. Johnson?
Well, you give a lawyer a microphone and a captive audience, you never know what's going to happen. I just wanted to let everybody know that we are so excited, because we've been selected to give a presentation at the annual conference this year for the MASB up at Traverse City, and we're going to be working hard on that, and we're going to do you proud. All of us are going to be here, be there at the, at the conference, and I think that is so important. When you give a presentation like we're going to give, to have all the Board members there, it, it sends a message to other Boards, how coherent we are, how together we are, and how well we work together. And I think that's an outstanding trait, and we are the standard, folks. Thank you.
Yeah, but we're looking forward to getting that presentation going and, and making our district proud by representing. Oh, the topic is, effective development, Boards and Their Effective Development.
Yeah, for the Board Superintendent Team.
Yeah, for a Board Superintendent Team. Thank you. I got to get looking at that.
And Mrs. Oquist will be joining us, correct?